We call this February 24th Jackson County Commission Work Session Order. Have our roll call.
District one, Mr. Duffy.
Present.
Mr. Two, Mr. Double.
Present.
Mr. Three, Mr. Miller. District four, Mr. Levin.
Present.
Okay, four is present. Business can be conducted and this is a meeting, not a work session, declared by. Have our invocation by Mr. Porter and our pledge by Mr. Guthrie.
Our Lord in heaven, we are blessed to be here today. We thank you for the chance to come together to discuss the matters that are important to this community, for these men to deliberate upon them and make good decisions, and we thank you for that. And we thank for the country that we have this opportunity, that we can meet together, we can discuss these items in civil manner without the fear of harm or retribution. And God, we thank you for that, and we thank you for those that protect those freedoms by serving in armed services and otherwise. We pray that you'll be with those men and women in armed services, that we keep them safe, that they'll do a good job, and they'll come home safely to their families. We pray for the families while they miss them, pray that you'll comfort and guide them also. God, continue to be with us all, bless us. We thank you for the great and wonderful weather we've had today in the creation of all things. We thank, pray these things in Christ's name.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. We have our minutes from our February 10th and February 18th, the February 10th meeting, February 18th public hearing. So at this time, we entertain a motion to approve these separately or together?
Motion to approve both.
All right. Motion to approve both, do we have a second?
Certainly.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed say no. Next item is approval of the agenda for the meeting. The only thing I would ask is if we move our public comments from citizens to before the public hearing so that we can hear regarding the tag tag. The other individuals who had signed up to speak about the vicious animal ordinance will entertain that at the time that we discuss that during the public hearing. With that change, moving the public comments from citizens to before the public hearing. Any other changes before we proceed? We have no other agenda items, so we have a motion to approve the agenda with that change.
Motion.
Motion, we have a second.
Please.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed say no. Okay. We have no awards or presentations, and we had one individual to sign up to speak regarding something other than the vicious animal ordinance. So, Mr. Goolsby, if you would.
My master speaker, sorry, I wrote it out here. Make two, three. I have a copy before I think I got that. But I come before you, that business group, guessing she'd call you Washington wannabes to act and spend like Washington does. Seriously, five dollar tax you're trying to get passed to help the budget deficit. You said in several articles that there were nowhere near the no opposition to the tax. I'm here to tell you that I think you're wrong. You say you tighten your belt, but I beg you different. Five dollars is not much out of your pocket, but it is to me. I probably spent more than five dollars today coming over here. But taking five dollars out of my pocket and putting it in somebody else's pocket so they can blow it really gets under my skin, and that's why I'm here. It's really been under my skin for a while. I have several suggestions that you should probably take into consideration when you start tightening the budget and tightening your belts. Since 1967, I have been in and around the sheriff's department, in and around till I retired in 2004, and I have seen a lot in the time. I've seen a lot of belt tightening that go on, a lot of junk. First of all, I don't believe an elected official should get rich being elected to an office whether it be local, state, federal, or whatever. I do not believe that first that should get rich because of this, which is going on every day in Washington. But it's happening. First of all, you might consider the food service for the county jail. The sheriff feeds the prisoners every day, and what he doesn't use, he gets to take on with him, and this is a fact. One of the former sheriffs in a county to the west of us admitted he took home over $900,000. There's delicious rumors that one of our own sheriffs took home a million dollars, you know? I still don't believe a man ought to be elected and become a millionaire. So you can take that, check on that and see. Is you know that the sheriff's department has a selection of them if they use whatever they want to do it for, you know? They don't, no checks or balances. They even took money out of Tennessee, bought a truck for the department at one time. Makes you wonder, you know? Look around, see all these high-priced SUVs running down the road patrolling, calling each other around, high-priced gas, I can't afford it, you know? How do they, how do they afford it, you know? Tighten the belt a little bit more, you know? They're not gonna, they're not gonna send one man on a serious call, they're gonna send two. So why, why take two vehicles? Take one vehicle, do it all, you know? Next, you might think about in 2004, when I retired, this county was hiring, was housing federal prisoners. They had an average of 60 prisoners a day. The feds paid them $35 a day for each prisoner. I don't have the figures, but that's about $40,000 a month. That's a lot of money coming in. Well, somebody made the feds mad and they pulled all the prisoners out. Maybe somebody with some common sense could go down there and negotiate with the feds, maybe give them back $45 a month, that's a lot of money. Go a long way towards solid redemption. Probably another thing is Jackson County is probably the wet and dry county in the state of Alabama. You know, we got a lot of wet cities. One instance is North San Martin, 100 yards from the Alabama line over Dade County, Georgia on Alabama 71, is a service station, and I've been told the employees there, they're the highest grossing stations in the state of Georgia. You know, and mostly, they say most of the people come in their Alabama tax, lottery, lottery, alcohol, you know? Seems to me like a good deal to me, you know? Just we're giving Georgia money, we're giving Georgia money for our kids, want to go buy a lottery ticket, you know, we need to figure out something to do with that. So I think y'all just, I think going to employees with scare taxes, tell them they're gonna cut their salaries and their employees when you got other means to do anything, you know? And I certainly hope, and I'm gonna do my best to see if this thing comes foreboding, this is gonna be loaded down, you know? I think we need to tighten their belt more, need to look at these things and figure out what's going on, you know? Don't cover it, don't cover it with a sheet or pull the curtains and say, well, it don't happen. But just give you something to think about. And like I said, I've been there, been around that department since 1967, and until I retired, I had to shut my mouth, but I don't have to do it anymore. I can have it like it is, or they like it a lot. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. I'll note that anytime you'd like to speak on any of those things, I'd be glad to sit down. Some of those issues have been addressed, we've been working hard, and the sheriffs have been working with us, and I think we're working well on addressing even those issues that you brought up, and we can sit down and discuss it more depthly sometime if you would.
I'd be fine with it.
Okay. Move on to the public hearing regarding the dangerous animal ordinance. This is the time and place as advertised to hold this hearing. We've had two individuals sign up to speak this evening. Before we begin, I'd like to ask if Mr. Porter would go over kind of the basis of this ordinance and what it entails, and then we'll have an inflection or comment from the commission, and then after those two individuals that have signed up to speak, and go from that point. So, Mr. Porter, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've been over this before. There have been a few revisions since this has been brought to the commission's attention previously, some of them addressing issues that were brought up during prior hearings or public comments, but this is a dangerous animal ordinance. It applies only to dangerous animals. It does not apply to a specific breed of animal or specific kind of animal. It applies to animals that are dangerous. And under the ordinance, it says that the ordinance is not intended to control all domestic animals, but only those animals that are alleged to be dangerous as provided for in the ordinance. Be a dangerous animal that must have either bitten, attacked, or caused physical injury to a human being or domesticated animal. So we're only talking about animals that attack people or other animals. We have included an exception, I think somebody had asked that we look at a situation if your dog attacks another animal that's attacking your livestock, and we've made an exception for that. So if your dog attacks another dog that's chasing or attacking your livestock, that's an exception. That doesn't apply anymore. We've taken that out to solve that problem, and that was a good suggestion and needed to be made, so we've done that. So that's what this is about, is to protect people from being attacked and damage being caused to people or their animals. And so a lot of, a lot of what's in this ordinance, if you've had a chance to read it, a lot of it is what we call due process. That is, once a report is made that your dog, or someone's dog, has caused physical injury or attacked another person or another domesticated animal, then what happens? It gives law enforcement the opportunity to come in and do an investigation, and then proceed from there. If they find that there has been an attack, then due process goes through to protect your rights as the animal owner, and of course, your animal's rights also. So that's what most of this is, is to make sure that if there is a complaint, that the right procedures are followed to prove that your dog or your animal has caused some damage. So that's what it's all about. Again, it's not directed towards a specific breed or type of animal, as has been rumored. It's about any animal that causes harm to another animal or to a person. So that's the basis of it.
And I will note, we've had three or four public hearings on this in several parts of county, where we did get so many different ideas, and hopefully this has been amended to something suitable. So any questions or comments from the commission, please, and comments from citizens. So we have, like I said, we have two individuals have signed up to speak, Steve and Fred. So if you would.
I had never done this before, but so bad with me, but I have a Palm Rainian that was viewed, and he has a sensitive stomach, and very important for his health and life, that I walk him. And I moved from Marion, Georgia, came from Atlanta to Bryan, Alabama, and Jackson County. We came and forth and buy a house, or build a house, so we put a trailer up there, and up to $9,000. It's nice. I have relatives all over the mountain, but I've been up there on and off all my life as a little kid. And since I moved up there, I lived by myself with just my dog. And besides his expensive dog food, I have to walk him in the mornings and in the evenings. So he gets an hour, hour walks from March 2009 up to the time I moved up here, I've been here a year and two months now, up to the time I moved up here, he had an hour and a half, two hour walk in the mornings and in the evenings, every day. Every day from March 2009 up to the time I moved up here. When I moved up here, there's no sidewalks, and there's no street map, it's a mountain. It's a country, it's in the country, it's mountain, fields and corn and all the rest of that good stuff, with little roads, with cars that go 80 miles an hour, because I didn't understand that, but it's total miles to Lowe's in Kimball, Tennessee, it's 30 miles, total. That's a long way. I'm on a budget. So with that said, I walk him, my dog, this is my neighbor. This is my neighbor right here that helped me out. I walk him, I'm on a dead end road, county 265, county road 132, Bryan, Alabama, 35958, that's my address. So I walk my dog, it's an hour and a half to two hours. I walk my dog from my house down to the dead end road and back up, in the mornings and evenings, for him to use the bathroom and digestive system, and the dog enjoys walking. There's one, going down our road, there's one road goes off to the right that's dead end. There's another road that goes into a C and comes back up to the main road. That road there has a bunch of dogs that run loose because people don't have, they don't have to put the dog up. It's no leash law, I didn't know that. But I knew they had big dogs down there, and so rather, and that's a total of three miles, that'd be great for my dog, to go down to the end of the right road, come back up, go around that C, that road that goes into a C to the main road, down the main road, back to my house. That's three miles, that'd be great, but there's dogs that run loose, the people own them. They're in the driveway, they're in the yard, but they're not in the pen, they're not on the leash or anything else, because there's no leash law. There's also no dog pound in Jackson County, or no police department for that matter, on anywhere around that mountain that comes through the mountain. They're in South Pittsburgh, they're in Kimball, they're in Trenton, the police departments, but they're not on the mountains. I didn't know the police came from Scottsboro, that's what I was told, I guess it is, I don't know. But Tuesday, last Tuesday, that's February 18th, I was walking my dog about dusty dark down to the dead end road, and I was in a hurry to get back home. But my dog goes from here to there, and it stops and does what the dog does, smelling, smitten down naked, and stuff, and I let him do that, because that's what he does, and I love my baby. He means everything to me. So we was on the way back, and I do believe in Jesus. Jesus let me be, if it hadn't been for that fenced-in yard, that the Lord let me be in front of the gate, I would not be here. I'd either be dead right now, or either I'd be mauled to where I would have been in the hospital, I don't know how bad, but it would have been an attack of death, or either mauled bad enough to be put in the hospital. The dog, the two dogs were pet bulls, that's what they was. The big pet bull, pet bull, I don't know how big the pet bull is, they usually come to about knee, a little above. But there was one dog, brown and white, but both dogs had collars on them, both of them had collars. One was brown and white, and he stood about above my knee. The other pet bull, the big fat pet bull head, was up to my waist. He must have been bred with a Great Dane or something, but he had a great big pet bull head, and I've never seen a pet bull up to my waist. I was walking back up the road, and Barrett just happened to stop at that fenced-in yard right in front of the fence gate that you go into. I was from here, this is my witness, he's my witness that this happened. And if I'd been anywhere else, even with a gun, I have a gun, a nine millimeter, it's loaded with 16 hollow point bullets, but I don't take that gun anywhere with me, it stays at home. So if I hear someone busting my window, coming in my house, that's what it's for, nothing else. So I don't take, I'm not accustomed to taking my gun with me anywhere, especially when I walk my dog down a dead end, my dead end road, it's a public road. When this happened, I was stunned, but he was like 100, 200 yards from me, and he bolted, the two dogs, the white one leading the way, bolted out of the woods, just about middle ways of his garden. Bolted out of the woods, and he came charging both dogs, but the white one, the big tall white one leading the way, he was barking and growling, I didn't see no foam coming from his mouth, both had collars. And he bolted out of the woods and was charging at me at a full run. It stunned me, and I like looked, wow. And I picked my dog up, and I went inside the man's fenced-in yard right in front of the gate, and I no more got inside that gate, and pulled the gate, and that dog come flying up to the fence and was supposed to the fence as this, barking at me. I said, I said, I said, you asshole me? Let me put my baby down, let me put my baby down. I said, I ain't got a gun, and I'm lucky, I got, I'm standing here in front of this fence, thank the Lord for that, with grace, mercy, and love, for he showed me. Let me get inside that fence, because if I'd been anywhere else, even with a gun, and I didn't have my eyes and ears open, I would not have had a chance. That dog was going through a attack, and that didn't happen, because the Lord, fenced-in yard and the gate I was in front of. I put my dog down, and the smaller dog, pet bull, I was hauling him up, ha, ha, get out of here, get out of here, go. And the man that lives in the house didn't come out to say, what's going on, get out of my yard, you need help, or just simply come outside, he was looking through the window, and when it was over, I turned around, looked again at him, and he just closed his blind. I just left, and went to his house, he gave me a ride home. Now, because of what he said. Now, when I'm on the phone with the police saying, this should be recorded, get it recorded, I said, my life has just been threatened, the Lord, Jesus, let me be in front of this fence and right in front of this gate, I took four or five steps to get in this gate, and this dog, pet bull dog, is barking, raising a cane, that pet bull was looking at me. He was not looking at the smaller dog, pet bull was barking at my dog. I hollered and yelled a few times, the other, the smaller pet bull went from here to probably the elevator away and was in the middle of the road, but the white, the big white pet bull dog up to my waist stood and barked and growled and viciously barked and growled continuously, as I'm on the phone with the dispatcher, telling them to send a policeman out to take charge, send a trained official out to take charge of this situation if the dog's still here, because I have to walk home. And by this time, it had gotten dark. I lived toward the beginning of the road. And I kept calling and asking for him to come out, and I was on that phone, I guess, 10 minutes, trying to get them to send a policeman out, and finally they said, the policeman does not have the jurisdiction to come out and take charge of a situation concerning a wild animal or domestic. We don't have the right. There's no policeman came out to give me a ride home because of the dog. When he came outside and heard the commotion going on, he said, what's happening, what's going on? I said, I said, I got inside this fence. I said, lucky me, he wasn't done, I wouldn't have made it if I'd been anywhere else, the way he bolted out in the woods, back in front of the garden. I said, but you see him, you see him? He said, yeah, I see him, I see him. And he started talking to me, as I'm behind the fence, and then the dog left me and went over to his house and started barking and growling and raising a cane at him. He's down by his house, by his truck, and then when he, when, and then he left him, I, he was with him just a few minutes, and then he came back to me. My baby Barrett is on the, was on the ground beside me, sitting down and tripping out on it, because he was not vicious towards other animals. He was abused, but I had to walk into people, but he's just sitting there, just, I guess, wondering what was going on. He came back, the dog came back to me after he left him, came back to me and started barking and growling more. I said, I told the lady, the lady said, no jurisdiction for the policeman to come out and take the charge. A trained official who's trained to use the deadly force that's on his side, that's what he goes to work with. I have gotten a gun permit, thank God for that, just today, a while ago, an hour ago. So I can carry, I don't like breaking the law. And so for me not to break the law, I had to come down here and spend $15 that I don't have. That gives me a total of $9 in my bank account to do me until I get my check 16 days from now, direct deposit. But it's okay, it's worth it, because now on, I think it's ridiculous for me to have to carry my gun down a public road because I'm offing my dog. Now, that mountain is country.
If I may interject, the, I think what you're saying is...
The law needs to be changed so the policeman can come out. When I get on the phone, anyone just take the law out of the hands of the individual person and put it into the hands of the policeman who is trained to use, to use his deadly force when necessary, and trained to take control of the situation, that hand, wild or domestic, and give that individual protection. Protect the child who is playing in the yard. The mountain is country, on that, on the side of the road I live on, is 5,000 plus acres of wild dogs, coyotes, that's not dimensioned, the woods are dimensioned. 200 yards away across the street, you have houses, houses being put into place on people's property, that grandma and grandpa's property. It used to be cotton and corn, woods, a few houses here and there, more woods. There's 5,000 plus acres across the street from them woods of homes. How in the world do people buy homes when it's such a bad economy, very few jobs, and the jobs that are out there are paying nothing? How is that little city of houses up there growing? Trailers, trailers. We paid $9,000 to Terry Scott that we bought the trailer from, said, if you can give me half of the nine, I'll take $150 a month.
I think this ordinance is gonna do, allow us to do better what you say. We did have to have...
I want the law changed.
Right. We have a official that could have gone up there, but there's not much that that official could have done.
He needs to have, he needs to have the right to come up there and use whatever force he is trained to use. I have a gun permit, I can buy a gun, I got one at home. I'm not used to taking my gun, but I'm not trained to pull my gun out and fire at a dog, push it out of fear, it'd be rapid fire. What if, what if now, what if now I fired my hollow point bullet from here to that yellow paper, and that hollow bullet, point bullet hits the dog, hollow point bullet will explode out the other side of that animal, and what if that, what if that bullet ricocheted off the road, or ricocheted off the tree, and still going into cornfield and cotton field across the street, or going into 5,000 plus acres, it ricocheted and went back and hit a child that used to play in his front and backyard, because it's not cotton anymore, it's not, it's not, it's not corn, it's not wood. The place is coming, the mountain, it used to be country, and still some country up there, but it's a lot of people, a lot of cars, a lot of homes, front and back yards, a lot of children playing in the yards. The policeman needs to have the right to come up there and take charge before a child is killed by a straight bullet from someone shooting his gun, because he knows when he gets on the phone, to call the policeman, to tell them, my life's just been threatened, and my baby's life has been threatened, I was lucky to get inside this fence, send the policeman now.
I hate to cut you off, that's what this is gonna do, but we do need to move on, but...
Give these people right here who wear a gun the right to use it, they're trained, I'm not trained. They know when to use their gun and how to use it, and they can shoot their gun.
Right. I think it'll allow them to take control of the situation.
Please change the lease law, but don't, if you don't change anything, don't change the lease law, and then don't change the law to where they don't have the right to come up there and use the force necessary for violent, for a domestic or a wild animal. Don't change the lease law to where they have to have it in the pen or on the leash, without changing the law to give them the right to use, come up there and take control that they are trained to do, take control of the situation, and take control of when to use the deadly force, because when that bullet comes out of that gun, whatever it is, it's a deadly object that you can't even see, and when it ricochets, it's not gonna hit a tree, it might not hit, it's not gonna hit a row of cotton, it's gonna hit someone sitting in the front yard playing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next speaker is Mr. Ral.
Oh.
He's my witness.
Yeah, yeah, my witness, I was so worried about that, that pet bull, oh, he was, I didn't know what was going on with that dog, but she had him all, all frustrated, and I was gonna get my gun, and I didn't want to shoot him up there. Oh, dog, but he was a pet bulldog, and he, he towered him, and he went back off, he went back off the way, he was ready to get me, you know? And he just would come off another road, you know, over Jackson County, you know, or David Kent, you know? And bulldogs are aggressive, you know? I had one, but she wasn't aggressive, you know? She was a good dog, you know? But I was, I was ready to shoot him, and I didn't want to kill another man's dog, you know? I appreciate it.
Like, I think that's what...
Sir, I want to also add, after I'd hung up, before I hung up with the dispatcher that said the dog pound, that we don't have a dog pound for that county, our police station, and we don't have a leash law for that county, the woman said, well, the dog pound, we don't, is in so-and-so county, and they'll come out the next day. I sat on my porch all day, and nobody came to my house with a dog pound anywhere else. And I asked the woman, before I, this is the last words I said to her, I said, the dogs are now 200 to 300 yards up the road, not in the woods, they're between the woods and the road, in this grassy field-like area, between the road and the woods, on his side of the road. I said, how am I supposed to get home? The policeman's not coming, the dog pound's gonna come tomorrow, it never showed up. How am I supposed to get home? I don't know, ma'am, that's where I don't know. So I, the Lord's with me again, because he gave me a ride home to my house.
We do have a dog pound in the county, I'm not sure what the circumstances of that is.
I don't want a dog pound in this like that, I want a trained policeman.
Right.
I want a trained policeman who's trained to use his gun, trained to control.
Okay, we need you to continue, I'd be glad to talk to you afterward if you...
That's all I got to say, change the law. Jesus said, how can you, how can you read the signs of the weather and read the signs around you, and yet you can't read the signs of the time?
Any question or comment from the commission? I think we've entered several public hearings already, and again, having been out several times, we need to determine when we'd like to move forward with this, if there are no further questions or comments.
We're gonna make quick work session, give us, um, ideas to communicate with the partner. But we've got a big one now.
Okay. Then if there's no questions on the work session for next Monday night, uh, for final discussion before we vote. Okay? And if there is anybody else that would like to discuss this, give us a call at any point in time. Uh, come by and see us, um, before that time. And if you still have not seen a copy of the ordinance, please, uh, you can pick it up after this meeting or we can email it to you, whatever works best for you. Okay?
How, sir?
Yes.
How will I know when the law's been changed or that the police officers will have the jurisdiction to come out and take control of the wild or domestic animal incidents?
The, the newspaper should publish when, uh, when that...
I'll say a prayer that you, the official, the official will, will make that change. It's past you. Take the law out of the hands of the individual, put it into the hands of the trained officer.
Right. Thanks, sir. Okay, we have no old business and no new business, so we'll move on to our board. Mr. Mann. Mr. White.
I've got a couple of things. Um, I've been, uh, mentioning the last few meetings at, uh, about County Road sixty-seven or Timber Cut. I'm gonna mention it one more time. Uh, we spoke with a cutter that's, uh, of course, contracting with TVA off their property on, uh, road's also known as Langston Road. They're, they're possibly gonna get started as early as next week, probably the week after that. We, uh, we put up signs this afternoon, uh, letting everybody know that that's gonna sell if they didn't see the newspaper or something. So, we've got signs up on the road and, uh, big letters letting everybody know, you know, if they wanna call us, they can, and we'll kinda explain to them what's going on. Touched base with Mr. Harding the other day. They do have a, one school bus that goes through that area, so we're gonna be working. It'll be open during school bus in the morning, evening, afternoon. So, uh, we touched base with just about everybody. We're gonna, we're gonna call them again towards the end of the week soon, as soon as we get a, a date and we're closed down. Um, the other thing I talked with chairman about earlier, um, we're, uh, we're starting to have some issues. There are gas pumps down at Public Works. Uh, these, uh, these pumps are very old, obsolete, uh, been there for years. They're mechanical pumps. Uh, we discovered just how obsolete they was, went back, went out of problem, uh, two or three weeks ago. Uh, we, uh, we was finally able to find parts to fix it. Uh, we were told everywhere we called, you know, those pumps are obsolete, it's hard to find parts. So, I think we shipped them out of California and think, uh, good thing we got the internet now because we never would have found them if we hadn't. But we've got it fixed, it's up and going right now, but, uh, we want to kinda look at that and, uh, hopefully I can get with the, uh, commedia, Commissioner Ledwin, Commissioner, uh, Venable, and let's discuss that. And I've already got some numbers now, so we might be looking at that and bringing something to y'all another couple of meetings going down the road. Uh, the other thing, uh, chairman's aware of also, uh, we've, uh, we had a deadline. This goes along with solid waste. Don't, uh, we've applied for a recycling grant. Uh, set out and, uh, we got the grant, uh, wrote and, uh, the deadline for getting it in was March first. Uh, I put that in the mail last week. I know I discussed it with, uh, we've all discussed it several times. So, uh, that grant has been put in the, uh, in the mail to ADM. I spoke with the lady and, uh, we, I actually emailed her a copy of it before we ever mailed it, says she had to have any, see anything else we need to add. She said it looked fine, so, uh, we've got that in the mail, the, uh, the final copy. And, uh, hopefully that, I don't know how long it'll take, but, uh, that has been, but put in the mail. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Porter?
Go ahead. Yes, sir. I think I need to defend the sheriff's office today. Uh, it was mentioned a while ago about federal inmates. We've been approved for federal inmates since last August, I believe. Um, we, we were inspected and, and, uh, have a contract in, uh, now where the marshals can bring federal inmates to our jail. Have they brought any? We brought two. You know, that's strictly up to them, what they bring. Uh, but we are, we have agreed to do that. We've, we've got an agreement with the commission about, uh, the money that comes in for that. Uh, as far as vehicles, uh, purchasing the SUVs, if you'll look across the country, there's been studies done on the SUVs. Michigan done a study. And if I'm not mistaken, Montgomery City also done a study. Uh, we looked into it before we purchased them. The, the gas mileage is practically pretty close to the same, but the maintenance issue is where we're saving a lot of money. Uh, they quit making the Crown Vic, which almost every police department across the country purchased. And, and the maintenance issue on Crown Vic, we were spending anywhere from four to five thousand dollars per vehicle on maintenance issues over the years. So, that's why we went to the SUVs. Uh, the maintenance on those are supposed to be a, a whole lot better. And the slush fund, I'm assuming he's talking about, is probably the pistol permit. Uh, we use that to buy cars, to buy equipment, blue lights, radios, send our deputies to school. All that goes back into the good of law enforcement. As far as the food bill, that is gonna take some legislation passed. If anybody wants to do that, that's entirely up to, to the state. Uh, there's nothing we can do about that until legislation is passed. But I just felt like we were running down pretty hard there for a minute and, uh, laws changed and, and departments have changed since nineteen sixty-seven. And we've come a long, long way. And, and I feel like we've made some pretty good decisions and, and, and we're trying to, you know, we're cutting our gas budget. Mr. Hodges knows that. We've worked hard to do that and we're working hard to save the commission some money.
I'd say we appreciate the work with the sheriff and we, we work well together on the budget issues. And on those vehicles, the ones that are purchased, the county pays nothing towards that. It strictly comes out of the pistol permit.
Right.
We don't have any, uh, input to that. So, they've been, uh, funding that themselves. So, I think we have been working hard on it.
And that's for many years too. I don't know when the last time the county actually bought, uh, a car for the sheriff's office. It's been over fifteen years at least.